All right, well, I'd like to apologize for being a little bit late. We are going to reconvene the regular meeting of the Escondido Union School District Board of Trustees. And we would open up with the Pledge of Allegiance with Jean Charite, Charite, didn't get it right, from Mission Middle School. Thank you. A roll call. Four members present, Mr. Hughes is absent. You have a closed session.
Thank you. Closed session, the board considered dismissal charges against a classified probationary court action to approve those charges and release employee number 669145 by a vote of four to zero. In a closed special education settlement case number 2024-25-02, the board four to zero to approve the special education settlement agreement by four to zero. That is it.
Thank you very much. We do need to, if there are any corrections, changes, or rearrangements of the agenda.
Yes, I need to pull an item. Or as we pull one board policies. We failed to attach the board policies, so the board has not been able to read those.
We, the question that was at the next meeting is that motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, so we're going to vote, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Passes four to zero. Moving to the approval of the minutes of the last meeting, are there any changes? Looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All right, Mr. Anderson moves, Ms. Harper seconds, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Passes four to zero, oops, I guess we can vote electronically now. Oh, my vote was not recorded. All right, let's move on to tonight's recognition.
Yes, so we are once again happy to have the opportunity to honor some of our students from across the district with our SE awards, our Student Excellence Awards. So we're going to start off this evening with Mission Middle School, and we have a highlight video actually to show you. Okay, so why don't we go the principal says, Roscoe.
I got to tell you, thank goodness Cesar is here because Frank's gone, it's gone all to heck.
And I'm glad, because you know what, since then, I have lost some weight, so I'm so happy that I was retained. Good evening. I'm Mr. Carrasco, I'm the proud principal at Mission Middle School. And good evening, President Doug Paulson. Good evening, our three members. I also would like to ask our parents, please stand, and our teachers. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you. So so tonight, I would like to wonderful scholars, I would like to start with Moises. Moises is an all-around student. His behavior and participation in class is excellent. Moises is a great leader to us, powerful, and handles conflict peacefully. Moises por empeño para todos sus compañeros y es un ejemplar con su comportamiento, felicidades. Congratulations. I think I only do this once a year, right? Now Amanda de Leon is a dedicated student. She works hard, she's patient, and a great collaborator when working with groups. Pon empeño en sus materias y colabora de una manera positiva, congratulations. I think the others, I think trimester one and trimester three. His part. He loved in the LP. He is respectful and a delight you have in class. Es un niño muy activado, pon empeño en sus clases y participa en muchas en muchas actividades después de escuela, felicidades, congratulations.
And it looks like we have we have
play the just active.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and move on to our next school, and that's LR Green Elementary. I'm going to invite up Principal Crystal Underhill.
Good evening, board and cabinet members. As you heard, my name is Crystal Underhill, and I'm the principal of LR Green Elementary School. I am honored to announce our award recipients tonight. So if I can have Ellen McLendon, Madison Rowe, and Eros Armenta Fonseca, please come up next to me. So we will first recognize Ellen McLendon from Mr. Hollis's class. Ellen is amazing, she takes on every challenge with gusto. Ellen is so well-rounded, she's good at every subject, she's athletic, artistic, friendly, collaborative, and a leader. For these reasons and more, she absolutely deserves a Student Excellence Award, congratulations Ellen. Our next recipient is Madison Rowe. Madison Rowe's passion and commitment are evident in everything she does. She consistently demonstrates exceptional discipline and creativity. Madison has excelled academically, maintaining excellent grades, persevering, and setting a high standard for all-around excellence. Congratulations Madison. And last but not least, Eros Armenta Fonseca. Eros has been honored with a Student Excellence Award for his unwavering dedication to learning and his remarkable drive to achieve excellence in all he does. His consistent efforts and passion for personal growth inspire those around him. Eros also exemplifies kindness and respect, fostering positive relationships with both his teachers and peers. This recognition celebrates not only his academic achievements, but also his outstanding character. Congratulations, Eros.
Hi, I'm Crystal.
And it looks like we do have our videos working now, so we'll go ahead and highlight LR Greens.
Underhill, and I'm the proud principal of LR Green Elementary School, home of the Griffins. At LR Green, students are learning to be curious and compassionate about their community and their world. Let's take a sneak peek at our Griffins in action.
At LR Green Elementary, we cultivate empowered learners by offering authentic learning experiences. Rich in real-world applications, leadership opportunities, and letting our young ones to school on challenging challenges. That's why we offer breakfast to TTK and kindergarten kids at no cost every day. So little ones can get down to the serious business of learning.
Everybody, what's the outside of the egg called?
The shell.
A longstanding tradition at LR Green is teaching kids about the miracle of life.
Why we starting to get his wings?
By caring for eggs and hatching. All three TK classes have incubators. To set up an iPad so that we can watch live what's happening. And in this farm-friendly community, it's easy to find them good homes.
Our claim to fame is we probably populated about half of the chicken population in Escondido.
This kinder class has it all. The grounding, building, math skills.
Coming to be subtract.
And during calendar time, students get turns being the teacher.
It's so fun and motivating for them to be able to be the teacher, to get that sense of leadership and independence.
Third grade, don't forget that you have all your Friday to the kindness club today.
The coolest event on campus happens every Friday.
They can play games, they can make art, and they can interact with their sons.
The kindness club hosted by our student leaders rewards good deeds and good behavior.
Encourages everyone to just be more kind.
LR Green is unique. Three special education programs, offering accommodations and modifications for children with autism and the hearing impaired.
What is your favorite subject?
This Common Core class meets students at their individual pace of learning, while this functional skills program
Good job, two high fives, one, two.
Has more structure and instructional support in place.
So good.
Teaching our students on the spectrum is full of rewards. These kids earn a thumbs up by staying on task.
Transcontinental.
What does that mean?
Which allows them to choose a favorite free time activity.
And you did awesome, I think you did wonderful, so you got a star.
LR Green is the leading public school provider of sign language services in San Diego's North County. And every Friday, our deaf students teach sign language to their fourth-grade friends.
Some of these students have become really close friends with some of the deaf students. Everyone's learning to communicate with each other, socialize with each other. It teaches acceptance and awareness.
Whether it's during class visits, Jasper hatched a plan, recess, or lunchtime, our library is a welcoming space. With more than sixteen thousand books in our collection, students are inspired to explore their own interests.
Rather than sticking to curriculum, they can just explore whatever they would like to read. You can see when the kids come in, they really love the space.
Due in part to the incredible support of the LR Green Educational Foundation, a nonprofit organization dedicated to helping the school.
We get together and say, what do we need, what does our school need right now for funding? And we try to help out the best we can.
Like purchasing instruments for the band program and funding the school art program, to name a few. LR Green Elementary, where students become leaders who will make their community and the world a better place.
Alrighty. Up we're going to showcase Rock Springs Elementary.
Hi, welcome to Rock Springs Elementary. I'm Elizabeth Ramirez, and I'm honored to be the principal here at a school where we motivate students to succeed. I'm excited to show you just a little bit about what makes Rock Springs so unique here in Escondido Union School District.
Rock Springs Elementary, students engage in rigorous learning guided by the six pillars of character. Trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship.
Thumbs up if you're ready.
Starting the day with morning meetings connects classmates.
I appreciate Jacob, Maya, and myself for being good friends.
And helps build a sense of community.
They learn to be active listeners, they learn to be caring, and supportive of each other.
Today you have a few materials on your desk. Rock Springs science lessons inspire innovation thanks to the Twigg Science Curriculum.
Can we put a triangle?
Students collaborate to build 2D and 3D structures. Look at it, see how many ground crackers their building can support.
It's really a hands-on engaging program, and my students are loving learning science in this way.
We are going to play our games.
Playing shake those lists and roll your numbers helps these first graders practice important fundamentals in math.
They think they're just playing games, but they're adding, they're counting, they're doing like the probability, which they didn't even know.
Two shoes go, one pair of pants go wiggle wiggle.
Rock Springs is proud of their fabulous library and its valuable role in cultivating strong readers.
She already had a home.
Every week, each grade participates in storytime before checking out a new book to read.
That's exciting. There you go.
Well, she's sticking up to annotability.
In this fifth grade class, small groups help bridge gaps in learning while developing strategies to become stronger writers.
So that whenever they're reading a text on their own, they can think, hmm, who are my main characters? What is going on in this story? And so those questioning strategies will help them.
Isn't that nice? Let's put some water in this one.
The school garden provides opportunities for kids to partner up, take turns watering, and help to keep the campus beautiful.
It's really nice to have them get their hands dirty and be able to enjoy this space and their part in it.
More character cash for the mochi squishy.
The character counts store is open for business. Students earn their cash from teachers and staff for showing outstanding character.
Want to recognize kids for excellent behavior.
I think it's the coolest thing you can do in school is bands.
These fourth graders are getting into the rhythm. Learning music. It's a love that will last a lifetime. Speaking of cool, Rock Springs has the coolest after-school programs, like roller skating club.
Yeah, I hope it's a smile when you have influence under your feet.
And soccer, just to name a few. At Rock Springs, character counts, and our students are working to make their community and the world a better place.
And so next we'll invite up Principal Elizabeth Ramirez.
It's like that proud mo- Actually, I want to congratulate my teachers who happen to be in the audience here, who were all starred in our recent video, so thank you. Good evening, Board President Paulson and our cabinet members. I am also very proud to be here with some of my most outstanding students. I'd like to call up Lizbeth, Shelby, and Natalie to come up. It's okay, we'll pass. All right, so I'm going to start with my right. Next to me is Lizbeth Perez Tesca. Lizbeth is an example of tenacity and perseverance. She may be very small in stature, but she is super mighty in spirit. She has overcome both physical and academic challenges this year head-on. She has put so much hard work, she's moved from a, I'm sorry, a self-contained class to a gen ed class this year. Lizbeth has some physical disabilities, but you would never know that if you saw her on the playground. She will take on every student out there and show how strong and mighty little Lizbeth is. Congratulations, Lizbeth. Next we have Shelby Lambert, to my right. She, your teacher wrote so much about your hard work, you are naturally leader, a natural leader. She is our leadership, she is a true inspiration to her peers. She excels academically, she's compassionate, shows willingness to help others and reflect on their own character as well. She leads with empathy to inspire others around her and can and you will continue to guide toward even greater achievements. Congratulations, Shelby. All right. Don't hide Natalie. Natalie Mafas Madonado has been one of our students of excellence this year. Although Mr. Hernandez said he's only known her half a year, she has obviously been an outstanding student academically, as well as showing a sharp mind and curiosity to learn. She is very impressive in her work, but more so her work ethic. She, we all know you will go far Natalie, based on all you have demonstrated this year, congratulations.
And we don't want to miss out and want to go ahead and showcase Mission Middle School's video.
Hello, I'm Cesar Carrasco, I'm the proud principal at Mission Middle School. I want to welcome you and thank you for taking the time to explore all the wonderful things Mission Middle School has to offer. Please enjoy, thank you.
Mission Middle School, our staff unlocks the unlimited potential in all of our students by nurturing them to become collaborative critical thinkers.
Which is the trait and which is the variation?
In our classrooms, students are developing their science skills through innovative practices that allow them to showcase their knowledge.
Partner talk allows for that informal formative assessment, those quick check-ins. Hopefully seeing something in their learning that's going to light a fire that they can explore a little bit more in high school next year.
Mission Middle School offers students a unique opportunity to enroll in the dual-language immersion program.
Okay, los boyadis y los equipos.
Students achieve academic excellence and a high level of proficiency in two languages.
I think their brain is just kind of wired and developed to have a deeper sense of responsibility and cheer for their schoolwork.
Wildcats are developing healthy minds and healthy habits with physical education five days a week.
I feel that P is an important part of life, it is a life skill. I could teach these kids at a young age that we can be stronger and healthier and live a longer, better life.
No education is complete without the arts. Whether it's playing musical instruments, performing in drama or dance, or creating visually striking works of art. Our students learn to express themselves in classes instructed by highly qualified credential teachers.
It uses a different part of the brain. It helps make those connections in the brain that can be used in subjects.
Warehouse, students pride tickets on cool supplies and fun prizes. Pride tickets are rewards for good citizenship and classroom participation.
Encouraging the behavior and academic success.
At the end of the school day, students have the opportunity to participate in a variety of team sports, enrichment activities, and all-inclusive clubs. By working together, the Mission Middle School staff nurtures confident and caring students who want to make a positive impact in their community and contribute to making the world a better place.
All right, well, first of all, congratulations to all three schools. Three schools that I feel deeply connected to for different reasons. And at this time, you know, just in honor of all of our teachers, we would like to recognize some of our Class of 2024 National Board Certified Teachers. Dr. Philia, please.
All right, well, tonight, we do want to recognize some of our amazing EUSD teachers who have achieved National Board Certification. National Board Certification was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. It is one of the most respected professional certifications available in K-12 education. For the last three years, these individuals have participated in a rigorous process of creating a portfolio that includes action research, examining their practice through looking at student work, data, and even videotaping themselves. And all of this was done with the support and mentorship of three other outstanding professionals. Brenda Heil, Katie Maskowitz, and Harriet Sibley, if you would stand if you're here, just so we can thank you. And so at this point, we do want to go as our two new National Board Certified EUSD teachers. And we'll call up Christie Lake. Currently, she is a NETS mentor, and her focus was English Language Arts, Early Adolescence. Let's give her a round of applause. Just like the kids. And we also want to recognize Jaclyn Stepan, third grade, Felicita Elementary. Her area of focus was literacy, reading, language arts, early and middle childhood. Congratulations.
All right, well, before we move on to the extremely exciting portion of the evening, we are going to take a five-minute break so that our teachers and students can get home to have a wonderful evening. Thank you all so much for coming. Comments tonight? Seeing none, we are going to move on to public hearings, none. And then we're going to look for a report from the California School Employers Association, chapter 150, Noemi.
Oh, pictures. Sorry, we have to keep it upbeat because otherwise we cry.
Sorry, we have to keep it upbeat because otherwise we'd cry. So- Good evening, everyone. Of course, everything I'm gonna say isn't good fun, too. I'm happy to announce our new E-Board. So as we start 2025, we have a new E-Board with some familiar faces. I will continue to represent our members as the president. I couldn't find a replacement. So VP2 continues to be Mireya Barajas. Our chief union steward, Teresa Reyes. You know, getting, keeping everybody together. Our treasurer will be Rhonda Potter. Our webmaster continues to be Josh Stevens. And communication officer, this is gonna be a fun one, Eloise Guerrero. So, yes, so since she already talks to everybody when they walk in, she will make sure everybody stays informed. Our past president continues to be Rick Bibby. And so he'll still be around. I also want to go- once again to finalize negotiations. So it has been completed. And yes, we have all done the high fives and congratulated each other for all the good work that everybody has done. So although these are trying times with a deficit looming both teams were able to agree on an acceptable compromise. We look forward to start the next round of negotiations in March. So it never really ends. So, thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you very much. All right, thank you very much. All written communications have been distributed and noted. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have any items that any member would like to have pulled for separate consideration?
Continue ah, haciendo los menciones correspondientes. El señor Paulson mencionando que esta, este asunto ha sido aprobado. Todos los presentes a favor, cero en contra.
Moving on to Business Services Resolution 2425-09. Intigation Agreement Annexation of Territory Bees or Homes. Looking for a motion for approval?
I'm motion to approve.
And I, second. Any discussion? Let's vote. The final vote, all two, one no, one abstention, and one not present at the vote. Motion passes by a two to one. Moving on to our next item. Ed services. I, I am so sorry. Ah, this one. Facilities use agreement with the YMCA of San Diego County. All right, um, thank you very much. Is there any discussion or questions? Please, go ahead.
Yes, so their expectation is by summer, and we do have some language in this agreement that if it is delayed, that there's some recourse for us. But the expectation is, and their belief that it's to be done by summer.
And who's managing the improvement contract? Is that them?
They are the ones doing the work. They're managing the contract. We're just funding for, and that also gives us a ten years in this agreement of exclusive use of that facility, in this case. There'll be, as referenced in this agreement, there's other areas of the facility that'll come back as a separate item for the board.
There's no other questions. I'll make a motion to approve.
I actually would just like to follow up a little bit. Can you tell us about the scope that we are pursuing that our students are going to be using? So, all the way from, and so this is a great opportunity because I know a lot of, there's not a lot of pools in town. And a lot of our students here haven't even had the opportunity to learn how to swim. We're not close to the ocean. And so the services would start with beginner swim lessons for the students that need that. And even more advanced for lessons for those that already have some experience. And any of the other things that can be done in water sports can be also included in that. But the first thing we have to do is make sure every one of our students that has the opportunity to learn how to swim, how to be safe in the water. And then we can advance into some of those more fun things as well.
All right. To the community to get the pool facility, the entire YMCA facility reopened so that it can be the community resource that it was for many decades and which it needs to be again. And with that, having missed the opportunity to make the motion, I will second it and move back over to Mr. Olson.
Is the schedule of usage in this agreement here versus that for future?
That would be part of our service agreement from MOU later. But it does have it to where it's, it's our exclusive use for our school day all the way to 6:00 PM on Monday through Friday. And then there's some weekends that will be available. Weekends will also be available to us for other activities.
That's what I'm mentioning, that all the summer, the Monday to Wednesday, they should work in the horizons.
All right, so we have a motion to the second. Any further discussion?
Ah, el señor Olson hace la primera moción. Y la segunda moción la hace el señor Paulson. El resto de los miembros de la junta directiva hacen su voto general.
And that passes back voted four to zero. All right, moving on. Item number three, action upon expulsion case.
Numero tres, servicios educativos, que es la acción sobre la expulsión del estudiante en el caso correspondiente.
Regarding-
Y es en consonante de la expulsión del estudiante con el caso numero veinte, veinticuatro, guion veinticinco, guion cero dos.
Expulsion through second trimester, no, first trimester, next school year, which would be twenty twenty, around sometime November twenty twenty five.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Olson, Ms. Gardner, second. All in favor, please, um, please vote.
La primera moción la hace el señor Mark Olson y la segunda la señora Joan Gardner. El resto de los miembros de la junta directiva procede a hacer su voto.
And motion passes four to zero. Moving on, we have item number four, resources personnel commissioner appointment by classified employees.
Al asunto numero cuatro, que es recursos humanos, nombramiento del comisionado, del personal, por los empleados certificados que estará en proceso en marzo de dos mil veinticinco para llegar hasta el dos mil veintiséis.
All right, so I'll move for approval.
El señor Paulson procede a hacer la primera moción, haciendo la segunda el señor Olson. Y se está pidiendo el voto general del resto de los miembros del gabinete y la junta directiva.
And motion passes four to zero.
Y menciona al señor-
Item O one was removed if I'm not mistaken. So we are moving on.
Vamos a proceder-
To board member and board president report, Ms. Gardner.
Vamos a omitir los políticas y reglamentos de la junta para proceder a la parte de los, del asunto P, que es los informes de la junta y del personal. La señora Harper toma la palabra para hacer mención de las diferentes participaciones que ya tuvo. Y está hablando acerca de la fundación de educación escondido. Asistió a la reunión de los quinuanes. Ellos son uno de los que ordenan uno de los programas de lectura en la escuela ojillo. Hay muchas cosas positivas que decir sobre este programa que beneficia a nuestros estudiantes. Ahorita también para mí fue una gran oportunidad de asistir y presenciar. Y bueno, con la escuela de preferencia que ya hizo su apertura.
Know about different school options, how they go through the process, and also signing up for TK.
Estuvimos hablando acerca de las diferentes opciones y como es el proceso. También pude explicar este que hay un video en nuestra página web para poder explicar cómo es el proceso.
Like a big welcome or start here kind of button.
No sé si pudiéramos agregar algo en nuestra página web más invitadora para donde les indique dónde pueden accesar este video. Porque así de esta manera nuestras, las familias pueden ver las escuelas, podemos mostrarles cómo son nuestras escuelas. Y también para darles a saber que esto es trabajo por medio de una lotería. También miré que la escuela Lincoln en su página de Facebook hicieron una reunión para padres de la importancia de I Ready y cómo es tan importante para el logro académico de los estudiantes. Y bueno, quiero, estaba, me preguntaba yo si podíamos nosotros hacer una manera de cómo hacer más efectivo. Y el apoyo sobre- de ver cómo podemos apoyar a todas nuestras escuelas para que ellos también puedan promover esto de una manera u otra. Les pide una disculpa al intérprete porque el audio de la señora Harper.
All right, thank you very much. Um, just again, very excited about the reopening of the YMCA pool. Very much looking forward to that and for all the benefits that that's gonna bring to our community. Got the opportunity to be the pronouncer at the Mission Middle School spelling bee. That was quite an experience, absolutely outstanding. I think the best thing for me was not just the spelling. Spelling's important, get that. But the confidence that those students developed over the hour and a half of standing in front of a bunch of people and performing. You could see the positive change in their affect, in how they looked at themselves. Really, really an outstanding program and something that I'm hoping will go on or does go on at our other middle schools. And to shout out to the team who organized it.
Que toda lo organice con más frecuencia.
Design team yesterday, excellent design team yesterday discussing the idea of screen time and how much technology is appropriate for our students at what grades? How we're going to control that? How we're going to make sure that students continue to have the opportunity to use technology in an appropriate and creative fashion while not allowing that technology to impede their creativity that they might otherwise find. And also how to support them in putting in screen time when that is the family's choice, so that we're not putting a piece of technology in the home that is stressing family dynamics. So really good discussion. And I think this is a very timely topic that we're gonna be on the forefront of coming to grips with. So- Oh, oh. We have the Something Annual Escondido Education Foundation, uh, GAYA coming up.
Va a ser, va a llevar a cabo su mayor evento de recaudación de fondos que va a ser, parece ser-
Doors open at four forty-five. And the location, it is a changed location this year. It is-
El lugar donde se va a llevar a cabo cambió ahora.
It's a little Serbian Orthodox Church right by Nob Hill. Great venue and hoping that everybody is going to come and bring your credit cards. You can just turn in your credit card at the door. We will take care of it.
Y nosotros nos hacemos cargo de sus donaciones.
We will give it back when it starts being declined. I have heard a rumor that once again, they have failed to find an effective auctioneer, and so it will be me again.
Va a haber una subasta silenciosa donde va a haber grandes premios. Toma la palabra, doctor. For the collaboration and congratulations for successful negotiations. Por las negociaciones tan exitosas que llevaron a cabo y por todo el gran esfuerzo y trabajo que siempre están ellos demostrando. Y bueno, también con la gratificación de la triple A. Happy New Year, everybody. This is- Y bueno, ahora sí feliz año nuevo a todos.
It was a nice break. I think it was nice to have a little bit of time after giving the- as the calendar felt, so it was really nice. Hopefully everybody had a nice restful break. And looking forward to second half of the year. That concludes my report.
Y bueno, más que nada quiero agradecerlas a todos por su colaboración y apoyo. Y bueno, este-
All right, thank you. Well, the next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on Tuesday, February fourth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM at the Escondido Union School District, Caroline Gilbert Education Center, twenty-three ten Alder Grove Avenue, Escondido nine two zero two nine, Warrage.
La misma locación en el centro educativo Carlin Gerber. Y será a las siete de la noche en estos momentos.